On behalf of Lackawanna City Council, I'd like to invite all the council members and departments to this special council meeting for March 29th, 2021. Let us begin by rising and saying the pledge of allegiance. I don't, I don't think we have the need for a caucus at this particularly important time, but I will highlight the individual items. The first was Director of Development Stanton's request, which was the subject of the public hearing last Monday regarding the Bethlehem Steel Brownfield Opportunity Plan. That's item number one. I don't know if anybody has any comments on that. Item number two from Commissioner Public Works. As a result of our work session, we're being asked to approve a resolution authorizing Mayor Ifall to apply for grant money to replace the Warsaw Bridge. Any comments on that? All right, the next are two from Director of Public Safety. First is a public employer health emergency plan. To thank Director Wolf for supplying us. I didn't know that it was coming. And of course, we learned about it. The council members learned about it over the weekend. Thankfully to our city clerk, Jeff DiPiscali. In addition to that, Jeff, I'd like to thank you publicly for the efforts of reviewing that and making some welcome amendments, although very minor in form, they are far reaching in impact, in my opinion. And we appreciate that, Jeff. Thank you for your leadership on that. I don't know if anyone has any questions of Director Wolf on that public employee health emergency plan.
There are a few things I'm looking for that we may have to amend, and it's nothing major. It's just that these are titles that we don't use. And on page 11, well, it depends on which one you're looking at. I had two of them. It's where it starts mentioning all the positions under the reduced risk through remote working staggered shifts. And we started having titles. We have city, the city mayor, coenforcement officer, et cetera. Near the end, we have, I guess, I guess it's on a page 11, it says Officer in Charge. We don't, I don't know what that is, and I don't think we have one. So unless that could be explained, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind having that title removed. And also it states engineering. Last engineer we had was Mayor John Kurieck. And since the Commissioner of Public Works is mentioned as a title, I don't think that that engineering title needs to be in there. Because all other members of the former engineering department is now one of the public works commissioners.
Okay, very good. Yeah, got no problem.
I'm just, just identifying things that, like I said, this is, that's my only issue. It's not damn good issues. It's a pretty well put together piece. John, Mr. Wolf, I think, and I'm going to applaud you for your efforts to putting this together for us. And unless we do know what an officer in charge is, I think that's obviously different, other, different governments have different titles.
Yep, absolutely. I'll remove engineering and I'll remove officer in charge.
Okay, very good. I'd imagine I'd have to make a motion to omit those and then we'll have to approve as amended, otherwise it'll be adopted as is. So that won't be a big deal, but I just caught those as I was going through it. Other than that, I think it's a very solid document. And we're getting it in on time as the state authorizes to. So appreciate everyone's efforts on these. And again, Jeff, thank you again for, you know, we were working with this over the weekend. And I just want to say thank you for that because this is important. We have to get this in.
I appreciate that, but this actually was, it was all John. I just made some tweaks, but if I just may, Jeff, you mentioned striking engineering and officer in charge. I don't think we have to vote to eliminate those. I think we just amended and then you just vote on the whole package as amended.
That's exactly what I was talking about, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we won't get into specifics. I've crossed out engineering. I've crossed out officer in charge. Is everybody on board with that?
Yeah.
Okay, and then so then when we actually, when we actually vote to approve the resolution in the communication from John Wolf, we'll just put down the public emergency health response plan, emergency as amended.
Well, we would have to, because we're in caucus now, we have to make a motion to amend and then approve as amended. And then it's two different motions, but it's the same item. So that's good. One more question, since it does mention in here under employee and contract leave, there was a that says the Family First Corona Response Act is to be required, provided as required. Is that provided throughout the city?
I believe that's, I believe that is provided through the CDC. I'd have to double check exactly where that is, but we're going to follow that. We're going to follow the federal guidelines or the state guidelines, which that might be a state. That might be a state one, but we'll follow whichever the state is. And pretty much throughout this whole thing, it does give the mayor, whether the present mayor or future mayors down the road, the option to, to tweak this, to move it around, to fix whatever may come up down the road.
Well, we've been amending both where I work at and every government in New York State has been amending throughout the whole COVID thing. And you're right, John, will be, this will be amended throughout as the, hopefully the smoke clearing and, you know, there's light at the end of the tunnel. But this is important to have in here. So again, thank you. That's really all I got. So other than that, job well done, everybody.
Okay, Councilman Samansky, thank you. The second item from Director Wolf has to do with the police reform and collaborative, collaborative planning. For all of us, John Wolf, Director Wolf, we'd like to thank you for your efforts on that. You put together a citizens committee that was very vocal and engaged and contributed to some of the language that was, that's going to be forwarded along with the main body of that work. I would ask that our city clerk, who I had a discussion with before, is there a need for a public hearing on this?
Are you directing that to me?
Yes.
Okay, the way I was told, I think, John, we had some conversation on this, and as per the city attorney, I believe the requirement recall calls for some type of public input, some type of forum. Is it specifically John or Rick? It's specifically a public hearing, you know?
Not a public hearing. It said public input. We're supposed to meet with, with the public. I was going to suggest we do a public hearing. But when I talked to Mr. Wolf, he said that there was a committee which is composed of members of the public. You know, it's probably, even though we're passing it, it's probably not a bad idea to, you know, ask the public for any input or to have a second public hearing on it, even though we're passing it now, just to get any additional input in case we do what decide that there may be some changes needed.
I have a question. But the police chief and the mayor met with members of the public last year. Wouldn't that count as?
No.
Input?
Can I say something?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting that you met with last year is a meeting that I set up with the public before they even had the committee. And they, and they only had one meeting since then, which was with the, with the committee person. It's supposed to be more than one meeting. More than one meeting, so would be, with that, with that committee form. You know, it should have been about two or three other meetings before. That hadn't happened. And even though they scheduled more meetings, so it would be good to have some public input out of it because the first, because one of the things that's going to be said is you only had one meeting.
I'm going to suggest that we possibly entertain, that we pass this subject to the comments at a public hearing. And I would recommend we have that in the, the May, the first meeting in May. That will give us at least a public time from today until then to review what's being submitted. If they want to make any comments, they'll be welcome to do that at a public hearing.
Okay, I guess if we have a public hearing, we'll have to be.
What?
It's going to have to be, it's going to have to be held somewhere at the senior center or somewhere.
You can, Rick, you can do it via Zoom still. Well, you may be able to. May 3rd, I don't know if the, I don't know if the governor's extension of the open meetings law will apply. Right now, the open meetings law extension is through April 16th, which covers this meeting, obviously in a meeting on April 12th. There's another meeting, there's another meeting.
We just had a public hearing last week by Zoom.
Right, so, but the thing is, if the governor doesn't extend the allowance of that, past April 16th, we'd have to have one in person.
You can also have it at St. Anthony's. We'd have to have a, a meeting in person and not by Zoom as the city council. So what would be the difference?
Well, there's not. I'm just, I'm just pointing out that as if, because he asked about the, he mentioned having people there. I said, well, you know, you may or may not have to, depending on whether or not this public meetings executive orders extended. Whatever format we use for the main meeting, obviously will hold true for the, for the public hearing.
It's about, it's a little bit better than a month. And if it's by public hearing via the public being present at a location, either senior center on Martin Road or back at city hall and council chambers. And if not, in the government, or the governor continues Zoom allowance, then we'll have it by Zoom. We just had a public meeting last week. A public hearing.
Guys. But we also could have it at St. Anthony's too, that you hold.
Well, the location right now is speculative, only because we don't know what the rules are going to be. We could have it anywhere, for that matter, as long as adequate notice is given, right? If I may, guys, if I may, all right. The directive from the governor, this needed to go up for public comment. All right, I'll double check to make sure. But the committee that was formed was to touch base with the public. Also, part of this was sending out a survey, which was done. All right, the third thing was, is when, once this was established and this was put on pen to paper, it was to go to the public for comment, which it was. It was put on the, the city website, like every other city, town, and village is done. If you guys want a public hearing, I am all for that, definitely. Transparency is one of the big things they want done with this, but we have covered all the bases to get this passed, to get this done. Again, I'm not saying that we shouldn't have a public hearing. I think this is going to be a continuing thing throughout six, nine, 10 months, two years, whatever it may be. But everything that was done was done. If we're going to have public hearings, though, I feel personally as a public, as a director of public safety, we should set up four of these meetings and they should be in each ward. Not just the first ward, not just the third ward, not just the fourth ward. Switch it up so everyone within our city gets to comment and make suggestions.
Can I say something else?
Councilman?
We have this on, we have this done on a, on a website, right? John, we have this done on the website.
City website.
Yes, but I'm looking at it right now, at the package. And I'm looking at you know, like that percentage and stuff like that. And I can't really tell what the percentage is in some of them. You know, you got it marked down here when people read it. Look at it. It should have been, you know, maybe may have changed because it's in black and stuff like that. It's hard to read.
I'm confused by what you're asking me, Johnny.
Well, I'm looking at the diagram.
At the, at the, at the survey?
Yeah, well, I'm looking at what, what is your gender? And I'm looking at the percentage and what is, you can't tell what, how many it is. It's just dark.
Does it give a number? It gives a number there, right? So what you're saying is the copy didn't come out, you didn't get a copy that was printed out in color. That's what you're. Okay, well, we can get you, we can get you a colored copy of it. I could talk to Mr. Nicko Meadow about that, get you a colored copy. I, I think Director Wolf, I think Councilman Ingram is saying that if it's on the website and it's not in color, if it's in, if it's in the same format that he is, has in front of him, it's difficult to interpret the various. It is in color on the website. Okay. Okay, back to the original issue then. Shoot, do you, do you want, would you rather have a public hearing on this? Or do you feel that the requirements have been fulfilled by the committee of citizens that participated in this effort, as well as the public survey that was circulated? Personally, I don't see how we could go wrong with, with having people invited to make comment publicly. Okay. We're still going to send it in on time. Yep. Councilman Surtik, you have to turn your mic on.
There we go.
There you go.
When was this put on the website?
I believe last Monday.
We just got it Thursday. So in other words, this is still ongoing process? This isn't the final draft?
No, this is the final draft. This is going to be, this, this draft that you have in your hands is going to the division of, let me just think what it was, New York State Division of Budget. And it's beaten by the first, yes.
Okay. And that, that executive order has to be included in it?
The executive orders, that's, I just put that in for your information because that came from the governor's office, yes.
There's a lot of statements in there that I don't agree with. And you, you addressed some of that in your introduction. As far as our police force goes, a lot of those statements he made don't pertain to our police force, I don't think.
And you're speaking of, Councilman, you're speaking of Governor Walmsley?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, all his statements he made are like, he's trying to pass them over as facts. And I don't think a lot of those statements are true as far as our, our police force operates. And it's addressed in the introduction, which I was glad to see. And the city overview, I'm sure a lot of these rules were already in place for our police force. But it's good, it's always good to review things and can always do things better. And I'd like to thank the committee for their hard work and you guys also. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Surtik. I think Director Wolf indicated that although this is the final product going in to the state, that this is actually a work in progress. It'll be tweaked, it'll be reviewed. There'll be changes made, I'm sure, as time goes on. This is not a policy set in stone, but needs to be reflective of the conditions and the circumstances that as time presents them.
Oh, yeah, and it needs to be done by April 1st, too, so.
Well, that's why we're, that's why we had the special meeting today.
Right, right.
Back to the issue at hand, do we need to have a public hearing or what is your preference?
I think we should have a public hearing. I think we should vote on it, but we still should have a public hearing. I can't speak, I, I know in the first ward, they're very interested in knowing what's going on. And that's what they talked about, even with the one and the with the, with the tablet. And everybody is not going to Facebook or going to think, we need to, and what Mr. Wolf said, going to each ward makes sense, you know? But I think we should vote on.
Deputize Director Wolf to organize those four meetings in each ward. According to everyone's convenience and an appropriate time and place. Thank you, Director Wolf, for volunteering. Let's move on to issue now. We're, it looks like we want a public hearing. And it looks like Director Wolf is going to be in charge of scheduling those. So I suggest we do, as Councilman Ingram suggested, that we pass the, the work product that was presented today with the understanding that within a reasonable period of time from the, from today forward, we will schedule meetings in each of the individual wards for purposes of a public input and public conversation.
If I may, just for the record, the resolution that you're passing tonight doesn't stipulate any of that. It just stipulates a public hearing to be held once. You're going to have to amend the resolution then to open that up.
Yeah, we would have to amend the resolution.
So we wanted to say, because as it stands now, it says additional public comment. All citizens via a public hearing on this matter to be held, and we discussed May 3rd, 2021. Now, do you want to change that language to say of public hearings on this matter to be held in each ward at, at different times? How do you want to word that?
Director Wolf, this was your idea. What do you suggest? Let, let me make that perfectly clear. This wasn't my idea. It was this went through, this is good just the way it is. If you guys, as the council, which you guys brought up, want public hearings, I'm all for it. I'm not, I want to be transparent in this, but. Well, somebody suggested a hearing, a, a meeting in each ward. I thought it was you, Director Wolf. I, I did do that because I don't think if we're going to have meetings, we shouldn't just have it in one ward. We should have it at all. And it may be by Zoom anyway, so we don't know that yet. That's good, but listen. You guys are killing.
I don't think, I don't think Zoom goes into each ward, John.
Every single, everything that was needed to be done, gentlemen, was done.
Well, can I chime in? Why, I mean, I think we should leave the resolution as is. And I believe we should have the ability, and later time to figure out when we're going to have public comments on, on this, because we can always amend it moving forward. We do only have two days to get this passed, so we're moving on forward on the resolution today. But I think to argue over timeframes and deadlines for something down the road that we don't have anything set for right now is futile. So I think we should address the future public hearings at another meeting and move forward with this one right now. That's just my recommendation.
So with that, with that then, the, the resolution is written where the public hearing can be scheduled on May 3rd, 2021. It shall remain as is. Also, if you read the last sentence of the resolution, it says, such plan may become necessary upon further comment, the last sentence of the resolution. I think that kind of covers any future public hearings, don't you think? So May 3rd, right now, do you want to set it for 6:30? We have a council meeting at 7?
I don't see May 3rd on this resolution, Jeff.
It's not, it's, it's, it's going to be amended to read that.
Got it, okay, all right.
That's, that's the date, that's the date. After discussing it with Council President Morano, we were discussing some April dates, but we have budget hearings then. So it became too much in one, in one, in one setting, trying to get budget hearings in and a public hearing and all that. So we thought maybe the next available open council meeting, which was May 3rd, would be the best date for the public hearing. So if we just insert May 3rd, 2021 into the resolution and then approve it as amended, and then it goes on to say future further public comments, I think, I think we're pretty good.
Well, so we have, we have budget hearings on the same day in a council meeting?
That's typical. That's what we always do.
I'd rather not have.
That's in the resolution that was passed January 3rd.
No, I get that, but I don't think we should rush a public hearing in that same day.
No, no, that's why we're saying the, the public, the, the budget hearings are on April 12th and April 19th. That's why we didn't pick, that's why we didn't pick that day for the public hearing.
Okay, fair enough.
May 3rd is the next available only council meeting night where we thought a public hearing would, would work.
All right, there we go, got it.
I, I would think that leaving a public hearing for May 3rd at 6:30 prior to the regular scheduled meeting, we'll see what the response is. If we all feel the need to either have one, a meeting in each ward or additional meetings for public comment, we can, we can react to that at that time. And with, with acknowledging to Director Wolf that based on the language that he is so familiar with, having drafted this, he may have taken all the steps in full compliance with what was required in the first place. But it doesn't hurt to have a public hearing in good faith. I agree.
Indeed. And as you said, if we, if it warrants further public hearings, if we run out of time, then we can schedule other ones.
I think that'd be good.
And there are times where public hearings where we hear nothing. And therefore, it doesn't warrant a second one.
Yeah. All right, any other comments? Just one, guys, just one. I just would, I, I would like to just thank Chief Packard. I know you guys thanked me for this, but this is big majority of this, all the changes in the rules and use of force and things like that, were all done by the, by the Chief Mark Packard. So I'd just like to reach out and say hi and thank him basically for what he's done during this. That's all. Thank you, Director. And we, we as the council join in that on behalf of the police chief. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Packard. Any other comments? With that, I would formally call into session the special meeting of Lackawanna City Council for today's date, March 29th, 2021. Mr. City Clerk, would you take the role?
Absolutely, Mr. Council President, Council Ingram.
Here.
Samansky.
Here.
Moretti.
Here.
Surtik.
Here.
Morano.
Here.
Department heads, controller.
Here.
Law.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
Development.
Still here.
Public Safety.
Here.
Public Information.
Here.
And I, I took the liberty of to tell Brian Laxo, Department of Recreation, that nothing pertained to him, so he was good. Communications from department division heads, number one. Director Development, request city council approve the attached ordinance amending changes to section 230-17 of the City of Lackawanna zoning code pertaining to the Bethlehem redevelopment area known as B R A.
Morano moves to receive and file act on the ordinance.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file act on ordinance. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surtik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
carried 5-0. An ordinance amending chapter 230-17 of the zoning code of the City of Lackawanna, New York, whereby the 2021 amendments to chapter 230-17 of the Lackaw, City of Lackawanna Charter and Code identified in Schedule A attached hereto are determined to pose no adverse impacts on the environment, are determined to be consistent with the City of Lackawanna's duly adopted LWRP, Brownfield Opportunity Plan and Comprehensive Plan, and the ECILDCs GEIS for the site. Furthermore, the city council adopts the negative declaration for the action of adopting the 2021 amendments to chapter 230-17 of the City of Lackawanna Charter and Code, and that the 2021 amendments to chapter 230-17 of the City of Lackawanna Charter and Code identified in the four stated Schedule A are hereby adopted.
That was scary, but that's on second.
Motion by Morano, second by Samansky, to adopt ordinance as written. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surtik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried 5-0. Number two, DPW Commissioner, request city council approve the attached resolution authorizing Mayor Ifall to apply for grant money for the Warsaw Street Bridge.
Morano moves to receive and file act on resolution.
Motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to receive and file act on resolution. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surtik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried 5-0, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into such agreements, contracts, and/or memorandum of understanding in order to effectuate the contemplated repair or replacement of the Warsaw Street Bridge, as well as into, enter into such agreements, contracts, and/or memorandum of understanding with the city's grant writer, county miner.
Morano moves to adopt resolution as written.
Ingram, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to adopt resolution as written. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surtik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried 5-0. Item number three, Director of Public Safety, request the city council, as per the attached resolutions, adopt the previous, the attached, which has been previously provided to the council, the public employer health emergency plan in its entirety, and the police reform and reinvention collaborative plan, which was also pre- And the police reform and reinvention collaborative plan, which was also previously provided.
Make a motion.
Act on resolution, second Samansky.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ingram, second by Samansky to receive and file act on resolutions. Ingram. Samansky. Moretti. Surtik. Morano. Carried five zero. Resolution A, a resolution whereas the City of Lackawanna adopts the attached public employer health emergency plan. As amended in caucus, in its entirety, and that the attached plan be implemented immediately, posted on the city's website. And otherwise posted throughout city hall and made available to all employees and department heads.
Make a motion to amend the, or, or the resolution to omit. The titles officer in charge and engineering.
Do you second?
Second, Morano.
So I have a motion by Samansky, second by Morano to adopt, uh, the resolution as amended. Eliminating the positions of officer in charge and engineering. Ingram. Samansky. Moretti.
Yes.
Carried five zero. The second resolution, a resolution whereas the City of Lackawanna hereby adopts the attached police reform and collaborative plan as amended. Amendment is pertaining to the public hearing date effective immediately and that such plan is hereby offered for additional public comment. To all citizens via a public hearing on this matter to be held at six thirty P M, May third, twenty twenty one. At a format to be determined, and the city council hereby reserves the right to amend or revise the terms of such plan as may. Become necessary upon further public comment.
Make a motion, receiving file.
Moretti second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ingram, second by Moretti to adopt the resolution as amended. And appearing, uh, public hearing date to be scheduled for six thirty P M on May third, twenty twenty one. Ingram. Samansky. Moretti.
Yes.
Morano. Carried five zero. Mr. Council President.
Uh, any further business, uh, anyone wishes to bring before the council? If not, then Morano moves to adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion by Morano, second by Samansky to adjourn the meeting. Ingram. Samansky. Moretti. Surtik. Morano. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.